I'd like to call this special workshop to order, and if we'd all stand, let's say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Patty, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Marino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Let.
Here.
Thank you. As this meeting is strictly for the purpose of discussion amongst the council members in the sunshine, there will be no comments from the public, and there will be no motions or votes taken. So, we don't need to read the language.
That's the idea behind that, is so that there's this chill downtime to where, you know, all of us, you know, I mean, live busy lives, and people sometimes have short memories about things. And so, no matter how good a job you do, I mean, you know, your name fades.
Max, you said it, even though I know the conversations that I've been having over the last several months on this, but the plaintiff for the term limits said in the last meeting they never intended for it to be a lifetime ban. Who led the charge and led the petition agenda going. He said it himself.
Correct.
So...
Well, you were there. It was actually said in open court. And it was said by the same gentleman as attorney in open court. That the idea was, you know, that you would be able to sit out and run again. Again, that's the challenge that is before all of you that I very thankfully don't have to make the decision on.
Well, it shouldn't matter what the intention was. The voters had, they thought they knew what they were voting for. They thought they were voting for term limits, and they thought they were voting for what seemed to be a retroactivity and a lifetime ban. That seemed to be the thought of the electorate going into that. So, you know, yes, you can, of course, we know that there's some differences there, but that's not what the voters thought at the time. So, we have to honor the thoughts of the voters at the time.
You don't know what the voters thought, because I know voters who didn't understand at all. They just knew it was a term. They had no clue that somebody could come back.
I'm not speaking for all voters. I'm speaking for some, and I think some had certain opinions and some didn't. And so, I just want to make sure that the language, whatever we put in here is not to be confusing or, you know, and I think we're on the right track. I think what we're doing here is making sure that whatever language we put on here is exactly what we've heard from many people this past year plus about what they want in our charter and what that language meant. So, that's, so I don't, you know, yeah, okay, fine. The people may have thought this, and someone may have thought that. That's all fine and good, and that's part of our conversation here. But now, we just have to say, what exactly do we want to put? And I think what we're doing is exactly what we're supposed to do. Making sure we're taking all of this information and trying to put it into language that's going to be easily read and can fit whatever agenda people want.
Since this is the only time we can do this, what are your thoughts on adding a limit to 28 so that it is not open-ended? And that kind of combines part of 32. You get the lifetime ban, but you don't get it until after a certain number of years served.
What are you thinking?
Well, and that's why I have this right here.
Fifteen is two sets of three. Eighteen is one more than that. I mean, fifteen is one short, right?
Yes.
Fifteen is one short. Eighteen would be three fulls. But if the intent is, our other problem is staggering the council. That, solving that problem fairly without adding a term or taking away a term from somebody, the council will naturally stagger if you end up with a number like fifteen versus eighteen.
Even by having three threes with a lifetime ban, you're going to get eventual staggering.
But this will help, you know, but then we still get a ban. There is a ban, and you get some kind of a parameter on, okay, enough is enough.
Well, let's get to it. Let's make choices.
How do you feel about that? It's just...
Well, if you're inclined, if I might, if you're inclined to go that way, because what you were talking about in 28, if it's going to be a lifetime ban, there doesn't really need to be a sit-out. You could just say, and you could certainly change the number.
Still want to sit out.
No, if you have a lifetime ban, you serve three terms, three full terms, and you're done. So, you have a total of nine years, and you're done.
Whether you sit out for a year and run again, or whether you sit out for three years, again, the term limits are about ending incumbency.
Right.
It's about ending your time on the dais.
Well, it could be ending a dynasty kind of situation too, as opposed to incumbency.
Right, but based upon the suggestion that when we were talking, that's what this would do with this proposed language in 32, which is a hard number of years, and then you're done. You can't run again. Because whether you've served or not served, whether you've served, because if you've served six years, say it's nine. Say it's nine years, and you've served two, three-year terms, you've served your six years, and then you get beat, or you just get tired of it, and you walk away. And then, a year or two later, no required sit-out period of time. Maybe you think, man, I shouldn't have, I should have run for office. And then you come back and, or you're like, you know, I did two, I'm done. But then, maybe somebody's running for office a year later, and you're like, wow, I really don't want to see that person get elected. And you're like, and so you decide to run for, euphemistically, the individual decides to run for office again. Again, they would only get one term if it was nine, because, and they wouldn't have the advantage of being an incumbent, because they left office. So, I mean, that is the, again, remember, the idea is if you want to do a, whatever kind of ban or sit-out requirement is about taking that change in incumbency, that loss of incumbency, and then pushing it further. Either turning it into a lifetime ban or requiring a cooling-off period or sit-out period, if you will. So, that's, it's just an extrapolation of the term limits. But the term limit itself is about ending that term in office or that reign, if you will, which is kind of a dour word, but that's what it's about.
What if we, what if we put no more than totally nine years after the comma, four more full terms, comma, totally no more than nine years?
Remember, we got 75 words to deal with.
How many words are in here, Max?
On which one, on 32 or on 28?
Thirty-two.
Right, what's on your screen, Rochelle?
Well, 32 is three threes, so if it passes thirty...
Totally no more than nine years.
Nine years is three threes. It doesn't...
But it also takes out the consecutive.
But it...
Well, and actually, this language already does. As I'm proposing this, it said, "It would be, shall the Palm Beach Gardens Charter be amended to establish that any council member who has served on city council," this is not about term limits, "it just has served on city council for three or more full terms, or you could say nine or more years, however you want to say it, whether consecutive or not, shall not be eligible to be reelected to city council for the remainder of their natural life." So, short of becoming a zombie, they could not be reelected. They would be done. If language like this is not...
So, if that's the question that is posed to the electorate, if that's, if 32 takes precedence over 28 based on our vote here tonight, and the answer is, and the voters vote no, then what?
Then there's no...
Then it's exactly the same.
That's why I asked the question I asked, because then there's no limit at all ever on terms.
But if 27 fails and 32 fail, then we're stuck with, well, we're remaining with two threes, sit out one year and come back.
Right, and you would be able to sit out...
Many times, you want to repeat that.
So, if 27 passes and, say, 38, 32 fails, then it's three threes and sit out a year and come back again, and there's no limit to how many times you can go.
Correct, just like it is right now for all of you and your successors, without any changes. Because, as I'd said before, the language that we're dealing with right now was not in, you guys were not in office when that term limit was enacted. And it says, "Any term of office which commenced prior to..." None of your terms commenced prior to the enactment of the current term limits. So, that sentence and the ban that the Fourth DCA turned that into doesn't apply to you and doesn't apply to your successors as we stand here today. Each one of you can serve currently, you can serve your two, three-year terms, sit out for however much time, whether it's a month, a year, if we had a special election or something, but typically, it functions to be a year, and you could run again as we sit here today. Now, your predecessors can't.
We're going to have to make sure that that's, that the electorate understands that.
That's why I'm asking about 28 takes into consideration the fact that there is a significant number of people that do want some kind of a limit on it.
So, 32 seems pretty straightforward. Do we all agree that 32 seems pretty straightforward? So, really, and we don't know if that's what we're going to end up choosing of the two, but...
Thirty-two is clear and conclusive.
So, let's talk about what the language on 28 should be in case that's what we want to...
As an alternative, right, just in case, right.
And in 28, it's act, 28, it says, "To establish that term-limited council members must be out of office for three years prior to being reelected." So, if you've served nine years, you have to sit out three years, and then you are no longer the incumbent, and you are running against an incumbent.
Should you, but should you be able to continually do that?
That is the question that you guys have to resolve.
Is the question whether we want to add to 28 or not. That's all. That's the only question I have with 28, is if we want a maximum on it or not.
Well, I think if you want a maximum, then the way to do it would be to use 32. If you're inclined, if the council is inclined to put a maximum number of years of lifetime service, then I think that you use ordinance 32. And don't worry about sit-out or time. If you want to put a number of years that somebody has to sit out before they basically reset the term limits, then I think you look at 28. Otherwise, I do think you're going to run the risk of trying to combine the two of them is going to, it could potentially be confusing.
I'm confused, Max. If you, if, I don't see why on 28, though. See, if the other one, you get your term and you're done no matter what. On this one, you could still run again. The limit could be longer, and you could, you know, you wait and run again, so.
Are you suggesting that we extend the sit-out on 28? Is that what you want to do?
No, I was setting putting in some kind of a total number of years to 28 so that you can run again. You sit out on three, you still sit out, not change the sit-out period, but put an ultimate number of years on 28.
Oh, I, oh.
So that...
So, this is ultimately a term limit as well?
So, that it has a better chance of passing if we go with 28. I think it'll have a better chance of passing if people don't think that it's open-ended. That's the only thing. Otherwise, we go with 32.
You're saying, oh, okay.
So, if the inclination is to go with 28 and not have a lifetime ban after your first three terms are over and be done, and you want to have the chance of sitting out and then possibly running again, I think it has a better chance of passing if there is some kind of an end game to the number of terms.
Where are you feeling with that? What's your idea of that end game?
And 15 or 18, maybe. I don't know.
That's a dynasty. That's what...
Fifteen would be twice, would be you get to do your thing twice.
Would be three years plus two more.
If you do 15 years, you actually end up with a natural stagger. You get a little bit more staggering.
No, it's not twice. It's only one. It's one and two quarters.
It's one and two thirds.
One and two thirds.
One and two thirds.
So, you have some additional staggering.
And you get a stagger, right, and that's the other advantage. It will eventually lead to more staggering of the council.
So, by putting that language in 28, the language is already in 32 that there will be a lifetime ban of number of terms served. So, in 28, if you want to add that language, that means you're going to require that the electorate choose a maximum timeline, no matter what ordinance we put on that.
Well, unless they don't pass it. If they vote no on it, we put 28, it stays the way it is, and we can run after a year.
Yeah, I understand.
So, in a way, they are deciding whether they want the ban or not. It's just side to the sit-out, too.
So, then the difference really is, is going to be the three-year sit-out versus no sit-out, versus a one-year sit-out.
But we're also, we're also going against what the charter review recommended to us as well.
They did recommend a three-year sit-out.
Three years, three terms.
But they also, they recommended three, three-year terms with a three-year sit-out.
With no ban.
And if we start extending what they recommended based on their, you know...
That's correct.
They didn't recommend a ban, though.
No, they did not.
At all.
No, they did not.
So, I mean, if we have, you know, want to consider all sides, I mean, it's a way to get a partial ban. I don't know.
Well, we have to figure it out quickly.
Well, if you put, if you put a hard number in 28, it is a lifetime ban. It's just with a mandatory sit-out after your first, after you've been term-limited once. And then you could come back and serve however many years you serve, based on the number that you choose. So, it still constitutes a lifetime ban. It's just with a forced sit-out in the middle of it, as opposed to 32, which is, is the total number of years you can serve, period.
But it's only nine. This one wouldn't be...
It's just a suggestion. You could change the number to whatever you want.
Well, let me play devil's advocate.
It's just a suggestion. You could change, in 32, if I put it, let me bring it, that optional language up here for you, okay? I just, I put that up there for consideration. If you wanted to change that to 12 years or 15 years, you certainly could. So that it says, look, no matter what you do, this is how many years you get total on the council. Whether it's, you're only going to get, if the electorate votes for it, you're only ever going to get a maximum of, well, things stay the same, six or nine consecutive. Maybe you can serve 15 or 18 years in your lifetime. I don't know. But maybe it's 12. Maybe it's nine. That's up to you. But the thing is, is that the consecutive, remember, there's the consecutive nature, and then there's the total number. So, whatever that is, however you go about picking that number, if you chose to do what's in 32, you could make that number, whatever it is. That's, this is just a proposed language. Again, I try to draft and propose language for your consideration. Ultimately, you have the difficult job of choosing what that is.
Well, playing devil's advocate, if someone decides to run for two terms, they have not maxed out on their term limits, they would not fall under the, you have to sit out a maximum of three years. They could technically run after one year.
Correct.
Right.
And just to be frank, I mean, without doing additional questions, there's, there is, there is no, just like in a zoning code, there is no way to zone for every possible eventuality. It's the reason that we have variances. There is no way to write a charter with regard to these term limits and a lifetime ban or a total number of years where we can do every possible thing that's out there. You will confuse the voters, not to mention the fact that no matter what you put before them, if they don't vote for it, they're exactly where they are right now, which is that you can sit out for a month, two months, or a year. It's just however long, whenever we have another election, you're eligible to run again after you've hit your term limit. So, it is a choice that no matter what you put on there as regard to a sit-out or a maximum number of terms, that is ultimately going to be up to the electorate, should you choose to pose that question to them, what that is, what form it takes.
Right, and you guys, you know, no matter how we clean this up, we are still putting parameters around the specific individual who wants to take the daunting task of possibly running against an incumbent or sit out three, or run two, sit out one year, come back for one term. So, we're still, we're still cleaning this up to the point that it is within parameters of what a person can do. And it's going to be better than it was before where it's, you know, we have term limits agenda that never wanted a lifetime ban. You had thousands of people signing a ballot that are a petition that should have took 30 minutes to read in a parking lot on their way out of Publix. And then you have the Fourth DCA coming up with their own assumption of what the petition even began, said, that they probably didn't even read. So, no matter what we do, we are going to make this better by putting parameters on what any one given person can do, even if they run two. You really think they're going to want to come back and run again?
Well, let me remind everyone that this is for discussion, and our, when we adjourn this meeting and we have our special meeting, we will be choosing between 28 and 32.
So, the question really is, do we, do we want to put a limit at all on the total number of terms? 32 puts a definite limit on it, the way it's written. It's after the, whatever the voters determine as far as when they vote on 27. If they, they don't vote 27 through, and it's not three threes, and it's two threes, then that is what 32 would be referencing. Then you would be lifetime ban after those two terms.
28 is, correct. 28 is drafted as a cooling-off period with no high-water mark, other than the consecutive nature of your terms. And 32 proposes a hard ban. Whether it's, you know, whatever number of years of service you five determine, that's what 32 does. So, and again, it's status quo, no limit, no maximum number of days or time that you've got to sit out to run. So, what the voters need to understand is what they've got right now is they don't have a lifetime ban. They had a lifetime ban against your predecessors. They don't have any ban at all, except against those individuals. Against you or your successors, as we sit here today, there is no ban. Do your three years. You have a maximum number of consecutive years you can serve. But once you leave office and you break your consecutive nature of your terms, you could come back and run and be reelected for two more three-year terms, sit out for a year, and if you wanted to come back, I don't know. I'm not, I've never run for office. It seems like a painful endeavor. I don't know if somebody would do it or not, but they would have the ability to do it. 28 would require them, once they have hit their, once they left office due to the term limits, to have to sit out for three years before they could run again. And the reason I specify the term limits is because, again, the whole idea is you're breaking that, you're ending their incumbency. And then 32 is, takes it a step further and says, "After X number of total years of service, you're done for life."
My biggest problem right now is I don't think our electorate knows that they, that the way it sits right now, people can serve two, three-year terms, sit out one year, and come back. And that is a potential problem, because if they're going to vote no on any of these things, I don't know if they realize that. I, that's where I was kind of getting to, that, you know, they thought that they were voting on a retroactive lifetime ban, and it's not that way. I don't know how that, I mean, I know the city is going to have to educate without a bias. But is there any way, I don't know if we can put a, current council members can serve two, three, and, you know, after sitting out one year, can run again. It's almost like that question has to be, that statement has to be presented to the voters, whether, well, obviously beforehand, but should it or can it be put on a ballot's question so that people know that if you vote no to this, it's going back to two, three-year terms, sit out one year, and come back again, which I don't know if people really want.
Well, I can't explain it in that detail, but I will tell you that, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, I mean, but if you read this ballot summary, that's why I used some of the 75 words that we have to say, to inform people what the current status is. "The current city council term limits constitute a lifetime ban from reelection only on those purses, persons who were in office when term limits were established."
Very good.
Now, I will be honest with you. I think that the Palm Beach Gardens electorate is sophisticated enough to read that sentence and understand it. And at the risk of being pejorative, if they're not, well, they get what they deserve. That's very simple, and it's telling everybody what the status is. It's a lifetime ban only on those five people. And that, well, and I didn't go into, and the people before them, but let's be honest. I think everybody here realizes that the term limits had a personality to it. And people were about the term limits for those individuals that were serving. And so, it explains, I think that explains it to people. And then it says, "Shall it be amended to establish that council members who have served on city council for X number of years or X number of terms, whether consecutive or not, shall not be eligible to be reelected to city council for the remainder of their natural life?"
So, 28 has that same sentence at the beginning?
Let me see if 28 does. No, 28 says, "The current charter does not specify how long a term-limited council member must be out of office before running for council again." And then it talks about it. But I can certainly look at the word count and see if I can make that, communicate that information in, in 28.
That one's 73 words.
Yeah, it's pretty close. I thought it was.
Still hanging up on what Mayor said before, though. If somebody only runs two, and then they're out, if we're on 28, if you run, you do six, if the three threes goes through, and somebody should go, goes in two elections and then decides not to do the third, they could come back in a year to run that third.
Yes, they could.
There's no three-year wait for them.
That's correct.
But there would be a three-year wait for anybody who, who is term limited.
Right, because they hadn't reached their term limit.
Just want to clarify.
So, and really, if the term limit is valid, they shouldn't be prohibited from coming back or being required to sit out for three years or four years or anything else, because they haven't hit their term limit. They haven't hit their maximum number, if you will. At least, that's the idea. And so, where if somebody is term limited, well, he said, well, you've done your three threes or your two threes, and so now it's time for you to take a break so that somebody else has a shot at it, so you're no longer the incumbent. And then, if somebody wants to come out, and if you wanted it, if the person, the previously term-limited council member wanted to come out and try it again, then they've had that cooling-down period, and they could.
Okay, Max, I've got a question for you. If you look at the language here of the, of the resolution that amended the city charter, it was amended on November 4th of 2014. And it says, "No individual shall be elected to the office of council member for more than two consecutive terms." So, that would, that would seem to mean to me that once you've served two consecutive full terms, you're done. And then it goes back as I read this, and retroactively says, "If you have happened to have served prior to the passage of this," it says, "Service in a term of office which commenced prior to the effective date of any term limit enacted on council members is credit against any term limitation approved by the Palm Beach Gardens electorate." So, that's kind of a clawback where it eliminated people who had served. But I don't see how the language is interpreted to give us another...
We weren't in.
No, it doesn't matter whether you're in or out. What the language says as I read it is, "No individual, no one, can be elected for more than two consecutive terms." That's it. And once you've served two consecutive terms, you're done. That's at least the way I read it. And if anybody who came into office after November 4th, 2014, which is us, you get two terms and you're out. How do you interpret that differently?
You have to give meaning to the word consecutive. Your interpretation obviates the word consecutive.
What's he mean?
If it's two full terms, if that's the intent, the word consecutive is meaningless.
Okay, how did the Fourth, and I'm looking at Levy versus Woods, how did the Fourth interpret it?
They didn't pass an opinion on that. They passed an opinion on the retroactivity language, and they said that every term that David Levy served was consecutive, even though it wasn't. He left office for three months. But they said, "Service in a term." They turned on their interpretation of the word "a." And that's what they hung their hat on, and that's what twisted this all upside down. Because when people say consecutive in a term limit, the purpose is the consecutive nature of the term. Most term limits don't ever talk about retroactivity. Most term limits don't talk about a lifetime ban. They say, "You get X number of consecutive terms." And if you use the word consecutive, as you know from statutory construction, you've got to read it to give all the words meaning and have the plain meaning. So, if consecutive doesn't have meaning, if you, you're saying, if you make it a lot, if you say that just that sentence is a lifetime ban, then the word consecutive is superfluous. It has no meaning. Because there's no reason to specify that they be consecutive terms if it's a total number of years. I also submit to you that the language is somewhat, it's easy to Monday morning quarterback, but I think it's somewhat sloppy, but...
Okay, so when they're saying, when they're looking, when they're saying in this case, the appellate case that we're talking about, Levy versus Woods, when they're saying, "Levy served a term of office which commenced on March 2004, a term of office which commenced on March 2007, a term of office which commenced on March 2010, all of these terms commenced prior to the effective date of the amendment. We therefore hold Levy was ineligible to run for council." So, you're saying, how do you, you're, how do you interpret this as opposed to how did the Court of Appeal interpret this language? Are you giving us a different interpretation now than you feel the Fourth came up with?
No, no, I'm not. They hung their hat on, remember, they said, "Service in a term." They said, "Service in a term from '04 to '07, from seven to 10." They said, "A, A, A," and each one of those was a term and was consecutive, and so then he's out. They did give meaning to the word consecutive. It wasn't the total number of years that he served. It was consecutive. That's what they hung their hat on, and they basically pluralized the word "A." Because in, in, actually, in, in opposition, I can't remember the case. It's been a long time. I should have pulled it up. But the case that I cited, it was a Florida Supreme Court case that had to do with criminal law, and it had to do with the criminal statutes and the adjudic, the Florida Supreme Court had actually offered, they had actually opined on what "A" means, whether it was more than one or one. It had to do with firearms violation, and this gentleman was charged with a firearms violation, and there were multiple firearms, and it said, "A, A, A." And I believe, if I remember correctly, it had to do with about sentencing and about how it was going to compound his charges. And the Florida Supreme Court said, "A means one." Well, "Service in a term which commenced prior to means one term." At least, that was my argument. That's not the argument that the Fourth District Court of Appeal accepted. They pluralized "A" and said, right there, as you just read, "Service from '04 to '07..." "a" and said, right there as you just read, service from '04 to '07 was a term, seven to ten was a term, but the language in the charter, as it reads, doesn't say, service in previous terms, it doesn't say, service in all previous terms or any terms, it says, service in a term. And that was the crux of their opinion. And when they interpreted it that way, and they ignored the fact that David Levy resigned to run for city, or for Palm Beach County Commission in 2012, when they ignored that, and they reached back and they said, well, all these previous terms that he served, they all commenced prior to, and they were all consecutive, even though he had a break in service, they ignored the word consecutive and pluralized the word "a."
So you're saying that the Fourth was wrong here?
Oh, yeah. I'm absolutely saying they're wrong.
But you also would agree with me that the Fourth is the law in this area, in the state of Florida, and specifically-
Till the language has changed.
Right, correct.
Well, Matthew, that's why we're here, like, we need to move on. This is why we're here.
That's why we're here, to change the language.
I do think they're wrong, and I'll tell you why, just before we move on. The reason that they're wrong is that I don't believe that they intended to draft an opinion that creates a potential equal-protection argument in the future. I don't think that they contemplated it, and based upon the brevity and the speed of our briefing schedule, I'm almost certain that they didn't contemplate it. Because we all know, or at least lawyers all know, the people that were writing those briefs and writing the opinions for the judges, were not typically the judges themselves, the people doing the research are lawyers with two or three years of experience under their belt. And the briefing schedule, from beginning to end, was ten calendar days. For those of you that are not lawyers in the audience, the normal briefing schedule for an appellate, for an appeal like that, would've been seventy calendar days. So Mr. Deloi, Mr. Smith, and myself, and Mr. Whittles wrote initial briefs, response briefs, and reply briefs to the appeals and the counter appeals in ten days, which I don't expect a pat on the back, but I wanna give credit to the other lawyers, both Mr. Whittles, as well as Mr. Deloi and Mr. Smith, that is a Herculean task. Well, if it's difficult for lawyers that are doing that, and that's what we were working on during those ten days predominantly, imagine what it's like for the Fourth District Court of Appeal. We're not the only game in town for them. They're doing, dealing with a lot of other cases, they're hearing oral argument, and then the panel had to be impaneled, they meet, they read it, their clerks brief it, and then they read the briefs from their clerks and they make their decision. You can add a little pepper to that whole thing with the fact that, well, our trial judge wasn't exactly viewed with the highest regard by the Fourth DCA, they admonished him previously in opinions, and I think that led, to some degree, to the result.
I just wanna stick with the language, though, just so I understand it a little bit better. It says, no individual shall be elected to the office of council member for more than two consecutive terms. Why would that not apply to us?
I didn't say it didn't. You are term limited.
Okay, so if we leave things the same, this would be the situation, we would only be able to run for two consecutive full terms, correct?
Says to be elected to two consecutive full terms.
Correct.
He means being able to run again, where we're saying that if it defaults, that we can do it, sit out, and then come back, because it says you had to be prior.
No, no, that's not what it said.
It says you had to be on the council prior to the term limits in effect, and it was the old term limits that were in effect, and we weren't prior to that, we were after that.
Actually, if you read what it says, is, it says, first of all, it says, no individual shall be elected, and I'm reading the charter, it says, no individual shall be elected to the office of council member for more than two consecutive full terms. That's the first part of it. So that flies-
And again, you have to give meaning to consecutive.
There's a qualifier.
Okay, hold on, there's no qualifier, it says, no individual shall be elected to the office of council member for more than two consecutive terms. Now, and I'm directing this to Max, second of all, it then goes back and says, service in a term of office which commenced prior to the effective date of any term limit enacted on council members will be credit against any term limitation approved by the Palm Beach Gardens electorate. So it seems like what they were trying to do here, at least, and you can explain it certainly to us, that they were just trying to go retro and say, hey, if you happen to have served prior terms, then that counts too. Is there an interpretation that is consistent with this Levy versus Woods opinion that would say something other than that? I don't see how we would be able to be elected for more than two consecutive full terms in light of the fact that this passed on November 4th of 2014.
I never said you could. I said, two consecutive terms, consecutive. The word consecutive means in a row, in sequence, one after the other, without a break, without interruption, unending. Okay?
Kind of like some of my speeches.
Well, if you give that word meaning, you have to give that word meaning. And to use your interpretation, that is a lifetime, six years, as you have just argued, gives no meaning to that word. And you may not do that in statutory construction. If it is to be two, three-year terms for life, then the word consecutive is entirely unnecessary. And you mu, and to see, I didn't put the word in there. The word was put in there by the charter, by the term limits committee, or the championed it, and the voters voted on it, and that language ended up in there. Ironically, again, it's not the language, it was on the ballot. The language on the ballot said, "serve," not "elected," "serve," two consecutive full terms, which, again, consecutive. If it's not consecutive, then you're not limited, because you have to give meaning to the word consecutive. That's why I say that you and any successors would not be limited to more than two consecutive. You could run again, once you're not, once it's not consecutive. Because their interpretation of previous terms, and David Levy and his previous terms, and the commencement, they were interpreting that language in the second sentence, applying the consecutive nature of it, and changing "a" term to multiple terms. And that doesn't apply to you because your terms didn't commence prior to. That retroactivity language, and in the bulk of their opinion, hinged upon the consecutive nature and the retroactivity application.
So if I understand what you're saying, what you're saying is, is that someone could run, if you've run for two consecutive terms, if you've served six years consecutively-
And then you leave office.
You're done, right? Because it says, no individual can be elected to the office of council member for more than two consecutive terms. So if you've served six years, you're out, and you can't run again. It says, you only get two terms. Is that-
I disagree.
Two consecutive terms. Well, look at the language of it.
I'm not, Mr. Lane, respectfully, I'm not gonna convince you, and you're not gonna convince me, so I don't see any point in for us to stand up here and battle back and forth. You know as well as I do that you can talk to several different lawyers and get several different opinions.
Okay, we're going to end this discussion at this point, because twenty-seven A and twenty-seven B talk about terms. Existing term limit of two consecutive full terms to three consecutive full terms. We have to make a choice between A and B, but that is next month, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we have had a lot of discussion about twenty-eight and thirty-two, and the fact that we might wanna change some wording on that to be, to, if there is going to be a lifetime ban, what is that lifetime ban going to be other than nine years? Or leave it at nine years, and leave it to the voters to decide. The only other thing that we haven't talked about in this workshop is plurality, which is ordinance number twenty-nine. Does anyone have any questions or discussions for Max? And Max, do you have anything for us?
I think it's pretty straightforward. It's a, that's an up or down, you know, whether you want to leave it as a majority or plurality. The Charter Review Committee did recommend it. It's not the end-all, be-all. What we were attempting to do, and what I think, believe what the Charter Committee, Review Committee, rather, was attempting to do was, we'll offer up the reality of it, is that, you know, we, historically, in this city, when we've had runoffs, the person who got the plurality in the previous, in the original election, ended up winning in the runoff. And people say, well, it should be, and there's plenty of arguments for and con. You know, one is, well, it should be a majority because you wanna have fifty-one, fifty percent plus one vote to put someone in office. But then the irony of that is, when you have multiple candidates, so you have three candidates, and then you end up with a runoff, the people that actually select who wins that runoff is a much, much smaller number than, excuse me, than the people that voted in the original election. So it doesn't, it ends up being fifty percent plus one of the voters, but only the people that cast votes, because that's the way it works, right? So you end up, say, you had seven thousand people in the original election, you end up with maybe twenty-five hundred or three thousand, if you're lucky, in the follow-on election. So instead of somebody being elected by thirty-five hundred people or thirty-four hundred people, they end up being elected by sixteen hundred. Again, it's just a consideration for the council, because ultimately, it ends up costing money. And a standalone runoff election costs us, costs the city anywhere in the neighborhood of seventy thousand dollars and up, and that number is not going down.
And ultimately, whatever we decide here-
The voters still have to-
The voters are the ones who are gonna decide.
Yes, ma'am. Just like Caesar, they get a thumbs up or a thumbs down, it's gonna be the voters' decision one way or the other.
All right. So we are back to being done, in essence, without actually clarifying twenty-eight or thirty-two. I'm gonna let everybody take a couple of minutes, meaning, less than five, to give a synopsis of what they have learned here, what they wanna change, what they wanna do going forward. Can you, like, we give our, we give the people three minutes, let's take our three minutes. And then we'll move on to our special meeting.
Max, put up the new language.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Sorry about that.
The current city council term limits constitute a lifetime ban from reelection only on those persons, no, we didn't.
There's an alternative.
This is thirty-two. There's twenty-eight and thirty-two.
Yep.
Right, thirty-two, though, he changed it, whether consecutive-
This is the one with the optional language about the three terms.
So he changed it, that's-
Now thirty-two offers you, shall the Palm Beach Gardens charter be amended to establish that any council member who has served on city council for more than three or more full terms, whether consecutive or not, shall not be eligible to be re-elected to city council for the remainder of their natural life.
But that limits it at nine years on there.
Currently. And again, I just put nine years in there because it coincides with the proposed term limits.
Max, I've got another question. Assuming that we passed one set of ordinances at the first sitting on this two weeks ago, and we pass a different set of ordinances at the second sitting, is that permissible?
Well, it's not a different set, and you're allowed to make changes between first and second reading, and so long as you're not changing the subject matter dramatically.
Okay. So it's kind of a qualitative, a subjective thing, as to whether or not you've made substantive changes?
Well, typically, what they talk about as substantive changes is if you change the subject of the ordinance that you're, the subject of the ordinance, and none of these changes are changing the subject of the ordinance, it's fine-tuning and refining the language.
So if I said, if we pass an ordinance that said, buildings can be ten feet tall-
I'm not gonna engage in hypotheticals, respectfully.
Well, I'm gonna ask you a question, and I think as an attorney, you really need to answer it. If we pass an ordinance that said a building could be ten stories two weeks ago, and two weeks from now, we pass an ordinance that says that the building could be fifteen stories, is that permissible?
Yes.
You can do that.
Matthew, I'll give you a perfect example. In the town of Jupiter, no, you've had your say.
Go ahead.
In the town of Jupiter, on their first reading, for their disposal of their waste, they chose one waste company. On their second reading, they chose another waste company. There was a difference. We can make a change.
Okay, Ms., as the attorney, I'm asking you, is that something that is correct? We can make a change? If we went with twenty feet, or twenty stories-
I believe I've answered that question, sir.
Before, you can, okay. That was my question.
Can we wrap this up, please? Rochelle? Are you good?
I'm good. I think it was important that we got a chance to discuss it and come up with all of the different ramifications, and now we just have to decide which way we wanna go with twenty-eight or thirty-two, and I'm still not sure which way I wanna go.
Okay. Matthew?
I'm good.
Carl, anything you wanna add?
I'm good. I'm willing to be flexible with Rochelle's idea, but I think thirty-two clears everything up as well. So I'm good.
Mark?
I think twenty-eight and thirty-two have specific language that, whichever one we choose to present to the voters, assuming we do so, will give a specific set of criteria, and I think that's the goal, is to make it as simple and straightforward for the voters if and when these ordinances go forward. And that's, and I feel comfortable with the conversation, I'm glad that we've had a chance to air some of our thoughts. I do, I would actually appreciate about a five-minute recess, so I can go sit in the room back there and think about what we just talked about. Thank you.
Okay, and since we are gonna have our special meeting after this, which will cover twenty-eight and thirty-two at this time, I believe we can adjourn this workshop. We're gonna resume at eight-thirty to talk about ordinances twenty-eight and thirty-two.